We are back in open session. And we do have a public comment tonight, so I'd like to invite Maggie White up. Yeah, I guess so. Sorry about that. Usually it's just down here in the other room, but.
Hi, can you hear me? I don't know.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. I've come from the future to tell seventh grade parents that it gets better. Just kidding. My name's Maggie White. I live in Riverside. My son was a District 96er for five years. I'm now, he's in high school at RB. I'm on the board of the RBHS Music and Theater Sponsors. And I just wanted to talk about a petition that we have going on in the community. I see some nods, so hopefully you've seen it. We've been publicizing it on social media, talking to friends and neighbors. Basically, the gist of the petition is, let me first say, I love it at RB. My son's having a fabulous time. He's living his best life. When we have a friend who's a parent, whose kid is a year older than me, and she's like, "You're gonna love it at RB. You're gonna love the principal. He's just like Mrs. May. He's outgoing. He's great. You're gonna have such a great time." And it's true. We just have one concern as music parents. RB has had like a 10- to 12-year history of kind of pulling hours from the music department. So they have choirs, bands, and orchestras, but they only have two and a half full-time teachers. So they don't have three full-time teachers, which was something that didn't even occur to me as we got in. My kid is in choir, and he's also in the plays. The music teachers do a lot beyond the classroom. It's negatively affected the program. Enrollment went down during COVID, as you can imagine. It was very difficult to get kids in a room singing and playing instruments together. So that was sort of used as a way to continue to like make drastic cuts in teachers. It's been 13 years of playing around with the hours of the teachers in the music department. So we're asking for just more stability. We have done a lot of digging. We've gathered a lot of data around other schools, how they staff their music programs. We have pored over the school's budgets. We have understood the way that they staff things. We've looked at best practices for a variety of music foundations. We feel pretty confident in the ask that they add point for, you know, get this third person up to a full-time is gonna have a very minimal impact on our budget. And we feel pretty secure in asking the community to help sign this petition. I have with me links to the petition and a fact presentation, and you know, you guys can scan this from me, but I have links to the fact presentation that kind of lays out all the evidence and our petition. We've had 1,500 signatures so far, so I want to thank those that have signed. I'll be around for a little bit if there's any question and if you want a link to petition or the fact presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. White. And I'm assuming that's it. No more other comment? Okay. I will pass it over to Dr. Ryan Toye for the superintendent report.
All right. Thanks. So tonight, we have our Student Achievement Awards presentation. We do this twice a year now, so I just want to thank all the families and students that are here tonight. And I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. May, our principal at Hauser, and Dr. Angela Dozel, our director of teaching and learning, to get us started. And I believe we're gonna have our board members go up on the stage.
Okay, so just a little bit of maybe housekeeping here while they're getting set. I'm gonna call the groups. I'll like say the group, and I will tell you right now, the first group is going to be the seventh grade soccer team. And so when I call that group, anyone that was on that team, if you're gonna come up here and you're gonna get into a line, you're gonna get a certificate, and then you're gonna come up the stairs, and I'm gonna call your name. I'll do the very best I can with your names. And then you're gonna go across and get to shake everyone's hand down the stairs. And then I know some of you are very busy junior high people. If you have other practices it seems like to go to or studies to do, you are also welcome to walk right out the door if you need to. It will not be rude, because we know you're busy. Okay, so we are gonna start with the seventh grade soccer team. So if you're on the seventh grade soccer team, come on up. I'm going to, I'm gonna do the names once they get down here. Is that okay? Okay. Okay. So I am gonna call all the names, because I didn't take attendance, so you may hear some names. We'll just recognize everybody, and we'll applaud at the end. We have Declan Ahern, Nikita Bolchert, Elia Berswa, Alejandro Carrillo, Arlo Casey, Junior H.J. Varia, Mateo Herrera, Pedro Raul Martinez, Owen Newberry, Declan O'Brien, Dante Pennella, Drake Solis, Talia Sheridan, Bryce Sherman, Roxanna Sweeney, Gavin Sweetster, and Eddie Wolf. Okay. The next group of people we're going to recognize is the Student of the Month. We have Students of the Month, and we're gonna go with the Month of December. So if you remember, if you were the Month of December, we're gonna start with Phoebe Matt Calabrese, Shane Hafner, Rory Hara, Ethan Johns, Tegan Johnson, Joanna Kolski, Lucy McAllister, and Maeve Toland. We were going backwards, so Students of the Month for the Month of November. Sophia Alcala, Sakina Amin, Alina Sharanya, Nysia Cruz, Danny Makavetsky, Matthew Rimpila, Charlotte Schwartz, Roxanna Sweeney, and Iris Angaro. Going back to the fall for October, we have Students of the Month. Iman Ahmad, Adele Alajousis, Adam Beg, Catalina Barsadi, Matthew Feeny, Grace Gustella, Jacob Jones, Camden Truesdale, and Lillian Zimmerman. September seems so long ago. Students of the Month. Charlotte Cervantes, Walter Chase, Madeline Dan, Andrea Ferrari, Alex Hoker, Julian Martinez, Annalisa Sandorf, Brayden Sloan, Ivana Vidmar. And then we also have participants from our eighth grade, the WSCA Student Leadership Conference, and representing those peer mentors Violet Brooks, Sophia Galindo, Grace Gustella, CJ Hardisty, Olivia Lenaris, Nula Lubek, Leo Martinez, Sophia Rotis, Cora We have one group left, and I hope I stalled just a little bit enough, because some of them had volleyball practice somewhere else. Are they here? They are not here. Well, I'll say the names really slow. Let's see. Okay, so we have the seventh grade girls volleyball team from the fall, and they were the Salt Valley Conference Champions. And I did neglect to say for our soccer players, they were co-conference champions. So for seventh grade girls volleyball team, we have Phoebe Baker. Kenley Callahan. She might be doing gymnastics, too. Elsie Christ. Mia Melvin. Sage Rolden. Ava Runquist. Cora Van Horst. Ella Wilkowski. Ivana Zaper. And Lily Zimmerman. I know some of these girls are also in outside volleyball club, and they were racing here, and we were too fast. But that's what we've got. Thank you all of you for coming and for having such wonderful students. Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of kids from the volleyball team that were, I think, at a, like their club practice, and if they show up, we might take a moment and give them their certificates. But otherwise, I'll continue with the rest of the superintendent's report. I wanted to thank and share with all of you that the Riverside Township has actually generously donated to our district a support service, access to a hotline called Support For You, and it's something that our social work team and our psychologists and our team over at Hauser is now well aware of, and it's something that we have recently sort of joined in terms of being participants in our, it's something that's open through an app to all Hauser students if they are interested in a 24/7 mental health supports and services. And the thing that's unique about this one is that it's actually staffed by licensed clinical professionals, as opposed to sometimes a hotline services. You know, they know how to triage and sort of provide you, get you to the right people that might be able to help, but this one seemed a bit more sophisticated. So we're, we now have a series of different hotlines and supports that we can offer to our students, and this is an added one, and it comes to us locally. So we just wanted to thank, thank the township for that and also share with all of you. I also am sharing with you information about the World Strides trip to Washington, D.C. And if you recall, we talked about this last year. This is not a school-sponsored trip, but we do allow World Strides to communicate through us and hire our staff to be chaperones, and it is just a Hauser group that's invited to go on this trip. So it feels like a school trip for a variety of reasons. It isn't sort of officially a school trip, and yet I know it's been important to the board to just kind of track how this is going. And so enrollment is up quite a bit from where we were last year in terms of the number of anticipated participants. So information about all of that for you. And then just a reminder about our Family Science Night, which is next week, Wednesday. Excited about that. We've, this is something through our family community partnerships that's been planned as a family learning night. Sarah Hickey, one of our instructional coaches, has been really instrumental in getting this planned, as well as our EL department in making sure that our bilingual parents feel included, connected, and welcomed, and have opportunities in both Spanish and in English that night. So there's a lot of planning that's gone into that. I'm excited about it. I think it's a great family learning event and hope those of you that are here that can come, but just wanted to continue to share a bit about that. We have kindergarten information night coming up. That's become a virtual event. As you know, we went virtual during the pandemic and decided that that was, learned that that was really a good way for our families to connect and learn more about kindergarten. Really, it launches for us also the beginning of the registration and enrollment process. So that's coming up. And then I just wanted to share a little bit of information that I received just this week, and that is that they have pushed back slightly to mid-April, the start timeframe for the Central Hauser Campus Project. It's working, you know, once now that the contractor, Abby Paving, has been hired, they have looked at sort of their timeline that's needed to get the project completed before the start of the new school year, waiting on MWRD permits, et cetera, and they feel that starting in mid-April allows them to get the project to completion in a successful way. I know the principals are already happy. They're like, that's just a couple more weeks of sort of uninterrupted play. Obviously, the parking lot then remains undisturbed, and as Mr. Gass was pointing out to me, it gets us through our testing window, too, which was something that we were a little worried about, you know, noise and other things that might have started to impact. And even though we were ready to silence them on testing days and things like that, this just makes everything a little easier. So that is the superintendent's report, but I think we have some volleyball players showing up, so come on in.
Do we just want to stand in front of the table, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah. If you guys want to stand in front, we're gonna, we want to recognize all of you. So are impromptu additional awards here? Okay.
So we have Ivana Zaper. And Sage Rolden.
Thanks for coming. It sounds like you have a busy evening, or had a busy evening so far. And that was the end of the superintendent's report. So we're on the consent agenda.
All right. All right, Stephanie, you're up. All right, can I have the board secretary read tonight's consent agenda?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda consists of minutes of the following previous meetings, the January 17th regular business meeting, along with the January 17th minutes of the closed session, the personnel report as presented, the payables pre-list as of January 31st, along with the payables pre-list as of February 21st, the summer school memorandum of understanding for paid plan time, the review of closed session minutes of the previous six months, and destruction of 18-month recordings, the equity proposal with Dr. Yvette Dubiel, and the Illinois Resource Center Service Request Contract.
Okay. Does any board member wish to pull any of these items off for further discussion before we vote? All right, if not, Martha, sorry, Kathy, could you call the roll?
I want a motion.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Kathy, could you call the roll?
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next subject is board member comments, and I might just start off by saying that I was here for, I think a couple of us were here for the presentation, I can't remember what we called that, child safety.
Keeping children safe online, hyper safety.
And we had a sergeant here doing the presentation that was a, now a retired Naperville sergeant that did some of this work in that official capacity and then ended up retiring, because now he travels around the country, giving talks to students. He had given us, given a talk to the Hauser students that day. Kind of scary stuff, what they have to say, what they do. There's a lady in town that was actually in the audience, I remember. She did a presentation a couple of years for us on the same thing, just talking about the gaming platforms and how predators can influence your kids and all that kind of stuff. So if you haven't looked into it, I'd recommend you look into some of that stuff. It's kind of messed up, people that are out there. But there's a Bark program on the phones that kind of do a lot of social media monitoring and stuff like that. So it was very timely for me. My kids have been on me about getting them a phone. Fifth graders turning 11 this weekend, and I am super scared of giving them that level of access. So knowing kind of what's out there and controls in place was pretty informative. So I don't know if any of the rest of you that were here have any comments on that, but I thought that was a very engaging event and something I think was very worthwhile. We had about, what, like 100 people, 100 parents show up. So I think he was complaining with, how many, what did he say? How many students do you have? Why are there not that many parents here? So, yeah, so, but it was good. It was well done.
I came, too. I really enjoyed it. A few things changed when I got home. But I did mention to Martha and Angela that I think it would be a great thing for him to come talk to fifth graders, because kids are getting phones. It's not just phones, it's the iPads and like all that other stuff, and I think that kids kind of need to hear it, too. Maybe slightly toned down from, but yeah.
Yeah, I attended as well, and I was here also with elementary-aged parents. And I agree, Wes, with what you said about the content. What I also found helpful about this particular talk was just there were some kind of tangible takeaways and things that you could implement with conversations. You could have sort of like a framework to have a conversation with your child, to come up with a plan of action for certain scenarios. So rather than just kind of being spoken to and, you know, fear mongering, it was, you know, there were stats, but there was also salient takeaways, which I valued the most and definitely implemented as well.
I mean, I was there, it sort of validated a lot of things I've been telling my kids, and I can tell you, my youngest was the one who actually told me, kept encouraging me. I was gonna go, but she encouraged me to go. And so it made, doesn't, it validated what I've been doing, because I've been doing a lot of what he's been saying already, and they've always thought I'm just the worst parent out there. But they still think I'm a bad parent, because I block a lot of stuff, but at least they, I think, understand it a little bit better, though. So.
Any other comments? Before we move into old business? Okay. So our first item in old business is approval of the additional social work presentation, this presentation that we had at the last meeting. So is there a motion? Let me get the motions pulled up here. All right. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approved, the increase in the social, school social worker FTE by one beginning in the 2024-25 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion before we vote?
Just, I guess I just have, I know even though we sort of proposed it, have we heard anything? Have we had any?
So this position will, we won't post till the board approves it. And then it would be to hire somebody, you know, spring or summer to start with us at the beginning of the new school year.
Okay.
And I've heard it's another hard-to-fill position.
Is it?
Yeah.
All right, if no further discussion, Kathy, could you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps? Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next item is the 2024-25 school calendar and summer school dates. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2024-25 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this before we vote?
What do we change?
The only thing I'll point out is that we were holding March 25th of 2025 because it's a primary consolidated election, and we are trying to move to institute days on election days. What we learned is that the primary consolidated election does not happen in Riverside, and so we don't need to modify our school calendar for that. So what we did is we reverted the institute day back to be the Friday before President's Day weekend.
So it was February 25th, but we've reverted back to February 14th, Friday, February 14th.
Okay. So we're starting school August 22nd, ending on June 3rd, and so the only change was that institute day switch on that month. Okay. And then spring break and winter break, there was no change from the original, original, original draft.
And then for the, is it the primary or the April 1st? We're still doing the Hauser Junior High Students Full Remote Day at Cape Town Elementary and Broken.
And then the November election is considered a holiday, so schools close, no staff present either.
Yeah, and that's the official election, not the preliminary thing that we.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So just to clarify about institute day, there's no, we're not expecting parents in schools that night for parent teacher conferences or anything along those lines.
Correct.
That would be a sad Valentine's Day.
Right, that's.
February 14th.
Right.
Oh, that's good.
Will the students still celebrate Valentine's Day on February 13th?
Probably yes, yeah, yeah.
I think the calendar looks great. I think that parents will appreciate that the Christmas, New Year's holiday doesn't flow so far into the year. I think that they'll appreciate that there is, we've made institute days budge up to holidays, so that there is a nice opportunity for four-day weekends. It's fantastic. Thanks for all your work in this.
Okay. Kathy, could you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, that is it for old business. So one topic, two, sorry, two topics for new business. October 2024 board meeting dates and other board meeting dates. It's been brought to our attention that we have board meetings on a couple holidays that we did not previously account for. Martha, maybe I'll just hand it over to you so I don't get those mixed up.
Sure. So the earliest one that's coming up on the calendar would be Juneteenth, is a Wednesday. It's actually the third Wednesday of the month. It's a holiday, so that would be a board meeting that we would need to change. We've talked to Riverside TV, and one suggestion would be, and there's, there's no motion, it's more to sort of think and go back and check calendars, would be to move that meeting to June 12th. We do have, as just a reminder, the next agenda item is that we have the June 5th will be our typical committee, the whole meeting, but that's going to be the board self-assessment, and we could do regular business meeting that next Wednesday, the 12th, and then cancel the meeting on June 19th. The other one that comes up in October is the calendar would fall on Rosh Hashanah, and we were thinking that that meeting date should also be changed due to that holiday. And I know that was a little trickier just with Riverside TV scheduling, and so you have there a memo that Kathy had organized and looking at the dates and then talking to Riverside TV. So proposed dates would be October 9th and October 23rd, so we're going to the 2nd and the 4th instead of the 1st and 3rd, right, Kathy? But they can't do the 23rd, so one idea is just to hold one meeting and combine committee of the whole and regular board on October 16th, which is our typical meeting date, right? That's the third Wednesday, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the three of us kind of talked about it while I was at the district office last week, I think it was. Yeah, and the three of us kind of talked about it while I was at the district office last week, I think it was. And I figured we could just control the agenda to make sure that it's not a super lengthy agenda, whatever the committee of the whole topics are, plus whatever business that we need to actually get done just falls within a, you know, no more than three-hour window type, or two-and-a-half-hour window type thing. So I think we could probably accomplish that.
Along those lines, though, going back to the June meeting, I think, you know, except for COVID years or other times when things are absolutely blowing up, a lot of the meetings over the summer get canceled anyway. So.
So that is a thought, I mean, we could do the self-assessment. I actually think we've done this, it's really up to the board because the self-assessment can take a number of hours. It can get lengthy. But if you had regular business to be conducted, you could have a brief, if we think we could keep it brief, business meeting and then go into the self-assessment. Or we could meet that last, the last Wednesday in June. Did we check that one with Riverside TV, which would be what, June 26th?
They would not be available because that's planning in zone.
Gotcha.
That's why.
Oh, okay.
It could also be on a different day of the week, on a Tuesday or Thursday. Or it could be, we could just keep it on the calendar as the 12th with the idea that unless circumstances merit, it will likely be canceled. And I'm not sure what my vacation days are yet, but that may have issues sometimes.
So I have a conflict on June 12th. So if we, yeah, so if, I like your, I like your suggestion, Dan, because like you're right. A lot of the stuff, since school's not in session, there's limited things that we need to, like officially need to do. So we might be able to just keep that 6:00 PM start time, but maybe we take 30 minutes to do whatever you need us to do and then move into it. So if we're okay with the dates there, then maybe once we get into May, you and I can figure it out and we can take an assessment of.
So maybe we hold the 12th, maybe, but with this idea that if we get everything down on the 5th, we'd get everything down on the 5th.
Yeah.
And then in October.
Yeah, just to keep in mind though, the, by, if we just met the 5th, we're not going to be meeting until late July. So we're going to be, it'll be about six weeks. I mean, I'm fine with that, but I think we should just be cognizant of that.
Yeah, we'll cancel the July 4th.
I think we've done that in previous summers.
Last year, we didn't meet at all in July.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Forgot about that.
Dave and I bumped into each other at Mariano's a couple of times.
Get a steak and a beer.
Like the construction over the summer will necessitate meeting?
No.
For approval of any?
Not, it shouldn't that early in the construction.
And I guess we always have the option of calling a special meeting if we really need to, which I don't think we've, I don't know that we've ever have. I know we've moved dates and called special meetings on Cal meeting days and stuff, but not.
Not for a long time.
Yeah, not to call out, like a day that we didn't have on the calendar. So, okay, if everybody's good with that, maybe just put those dates as a whole. I know that, I was looking at my calendar today and I know I have a, I won't be able to attend the June 12th. But I wasn't going to ask to move it just because of that. Because, yeah, we usually do have pretty light stuff over the summer. So if we're okay with that, we'll just call it sometime in May and I can, Martha can let everybody know.
I think that works.
Okay. And then good with the one date, just land on that one date in October and I'll just manage the agenda accordingly so we're not overloaded. All right. Cool. And then we just talked about the IASB self-assessment, which will be June 5th. And that is it for tonight's agenda. And I'm going to guess we have no other public comment because I see very few people here. So that moves me into future meeting dates, unless you two want to make a public comment. No, okay.
Sure.
Our next meeting will be March 6th, 2024, Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM, multipurpose room at Hollywood Elementary School. March 20th, 2024, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at the, in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. April 3rd will be a Committee of the Whole meeting, 7:00 PM in the library at Lythe School. And April 17th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. And with that, the session is. So we did not get everything that we wanted accomplished in closed session earlier. We probably need about, you know, 15, 20 minutes or something. We will not be making any decisions or coming back into open to make any official votes. So, let's see, I got to make a motion to go back into closed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to, for the board to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, collective negotiating matters or deliberations concerning salary structures of one or more classes of employees, and discussion of minutes of meetings, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, could you call the roll?
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay. Guys are now in closed session.